Sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda.
Right, I have two in-person comments. We can start with CJ Robinson. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, CJ Robinson, thirty fourteen, Chatty Circle. In the last public safety meeting, we finally heard the presentation from the village finance committee regarding EMS. In that meeting, Jay quote said, I believe we need to develop a new district agreement or terminate the current. And also quote, I've seen this for many, many years. This isn't something I was just thinking of for years I've been working on. He's claiming the other municipalities aren't willing to change and will somehow make spending approvals that will be the financial detriment of the village. None of this is true. Jay is now using the withdrawal in the game, the withdrawal from the agreement in a game of brinksmanship against the other district members. Allow me to elaborate. Maybrell of twenty twenty four, Jay presented to the EMS district board a quote conceptual plan only to have the village take over backend HR and finance operations, along with the thought to have the village board approve the EMS budget process. It was agreed by the EMS board to review the management support issue over the following year after the new chief, Holly, had the time to settle in. Village oversight of the budget was not seen as needed. Has Jay or the EMS brought, or brought this item up for discussion in subsequent public meetings? No. Was a formal change to the agreement ever made and did it include the issues being raised? No. In the public safety meeting, the presentation called for changes to the agreement. First, the village only has one vote on the board. Has it ever been formally proposed by Jay to change the makeup of the board? No. Second, proposing you use, using equalized value as a way to determine the payments made by each jurisdiction. Has this been proposed by Jay to the EMS board? No. Third, proposing that any request over three percent of the budget requires a supplementary budget request and municipal board approvals. Has this been proposed by Jay to the EMS board? No. Finally, proposing the municipal boards review and approval of EMS board budget. Has this been proposed by Jay to the EMS board? No. For the village board members and public safety committee members here tonight, you've heard a lot about accountability and transparency from Jay, but when was the last time the village was given any update on the EMS board meetings and any critical issues raised? Where are the formal proposed changes that are being sought to the EMS district agreement after working on this for quote years? When was the last time the village board saw, when was the last time the village board saw the proposed EMS budget before it was finalized and had time to review and discuss it? When was the last time Jay voted against any budgetary increase for EMS, be it employee salaries, hourly, hourly pay, or a new ambulance? To conclude, literally Jay cannot manage his workload with being village president, chair of multiple committees, EMS board member, fire board member, and all the other roles appointed to him by this village. You may find this comment and assessment harsh, but there is only one single person central to leading this entire disruption of basic vital public service. I ask you, if he's been working on this for years, don't you think we'd be a lot further along? And not have this level of disruption? It's time for new leadership for the village on the EMS board to collaborate with our municipal partners, invest the time needed to work through this without manufacturing a crisis, and make some concrete proposals that can be openly, openly discussed. I once again call for this board to replace the EMS board, uh, as EMS district board representative for the village. Thank you.
All right, Lynda Nieper. Please state your name and address.
Lyver, twenty twenty nine, July, speak. Here now, and I'm sort of here on the opposite side of the point. At first, want to apologize for my excessive emotional presentation on the firehouse meeting that we had because I only knew half of the information about what was being presented about the EMS. In other words, I only spoke to EMS people. And so I appreciated your presentation at the meeting that was at the Legion Hall because it was the first time I saw a full presentation about what the situations are. And I don't know all of the details about everything, but I do know that it was clear to me about the fact that some sort of a thing with the district EMS board so they don't have an open check to our community, to have some sort of borders around that sounded like a good idea. As well as the rest of the presentation was more informative than anything I had seen or heard of before on the village side of it. On the EMS side of it, I know that people, it's been a long forty-year road with that, problems up and down. So I just hope that we can come to an agreement, but my main reason for being here was because I was convicted in my soul after the firehouse meeting that one, I got caught up in the enthusiasm, two, I didn't have both sides of the information, and three, so I was just apologizing for my excessive nasty, this is how I developed it was, and I apologize to Jay for that. And also because our family has, my mom and dad were on every board that ever existed in this community. I really never, ever, ever, ever want to be on any, and have worked for anything, which is not a good citizen response to things, but the phone calls we got at our house during the twelve years that Dad was involved with the village is, leads me to realize that there's a lot of nasty people in our town too and very many nice, and I wish the nice people would call also to counteract all the nastiness, which is why I'm here in an apologetic ask of forgiveness of not wanting to be so ill-reformed next time. I will do my duty to become better informed before I, that's all I want to say. Thank you. And I don't want to stay for the meeting tonight because I'm a little
It's an option.
All right, it looks like we have, we have Jessica online. If you're ready to speak, can you state your name and address, Jessica?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jessica Bouchard and I live in Sun Prairie, working in Cross Plains. I wanted to note that after the presentation last session that I have more questions and I echo that we as a community need more information. While the presentation was helpful, I'm sure we also just still haven't had an opportunity to open up and actually have a discussion. My suggestion is that we have a separate meeting that includes EMS and only EMS as the agenda and include a discussion that will create a opportunity for a back and forth, like a Q and A session. And furthermore, we need to broadcast that information to more of the public and more of the community as it involves them. We should be including all of the towns that the EMS district serves and their people. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's online that would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone else, Jay.
All right, we'll go to consent agenda on request of any trustee. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Go ahead, Judy.
I'm with the group. I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda with pulling out number six, item number six.
Okay. Well, um, if you, I think we want to move six to the next meeting, otherwise I gotta put it on the general business. You could just say with pulling six to be discussed at the, uh, the September meeting.
To be discussed at the September meeting.
Then I don't have, we don't have to do it again.
Perfect, okay.
I'll second.
All right, a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, all same. The move. Village report, the only thing I have is we do have our community meeting on EMS on September sixteen, seven o'clock at the fire station.
Sixteen, who's that?
Yes, that should be Tuesday, September six.
Oh, it stays, because we
Yes.
What did, uh, seven o'clock?
And my turn. I just want to say that Helen Bailey is gonna be September twentieth over at Bear Park, like it always is, and then also we have some anniversaries this time. Matt Esser on August seventh had his two-year, Jill Hasko, Hasko, Dan Cheryl. Hasko, had her two-year anniversary on August ninth, and Dane Ziegler has been here nine years as of August fifteenth. Randy Brisk is twenty years on August eighth. Congratulations. That's it.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just confirmed that September is summer action month, so I have been working entirely in the way forward. We're going to put a donation barrel at Village Hall at the collection place, and part of it is just to build awareness for our community to realize this is a resource that they can access, but watch for that, and if you're willing to donate to it, but you're right.
We still having one at the library too. Do you know, you're on the board, right? Are you, there's a barrel there too?
So we did, the, we can bring that the library is the one that's based in April eighteen is the one that we collect for, because they also serve our community.
Okay.
And you have a little free candy there as well that they stock.
It's, yeah, separate.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just was trying to get clear, yeah. It's all going to people that need it, but one's going to Middleton, one's going to
Right, I mean, part of this will be to just build awareness that this is a, something that people can access.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Cody.
Is the final day the pool was open yesterday? Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are no major closures this year.
Correct.
So let me give a shout out to the Parks and Rec staff and Public Works for keeping the pool open all year. The text alerts were fantastic. Couldn't have had much better year at the pool, well done Mike and staff.
Anybody else? Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna give everyone a little
I'm first. Sorry, Mike.
I guess we're staying right on schedule, man.
We're just following the
Trying to show that I can be flexible. All right, all right, village administrator.
Okay, so I'll make this quick. So I just wanted to clean up the public comment and public hearing process. So after our meeting at the fire station, there was just a lot of, a lot going on, and so I just wanted to so I reached out to Paul, our attorney, and looked at some other municipalities just to see how they do their public comment and public hearing process. So I have, and on this agenda, actually, I have implemented it, I put a new little public comment instructions. So people that are interested in making comments kind of know what to do. So written comments are the thing that are gonna change the most. As you guys probably saw, I included two public comments in this packet. So what I'm gonna do is if I receive comments between our last village board meeting and then the next village board meeting by the, by noon on Friday, because that's generally when I distribute the packets, I'll include any written comments that I receive in the packet, so you guys can take a look at those, so I don't have to read them. Because that was the biggest thing that Paul had kind of brought up is that, you know, by me reading them, I could misinterpret the tone. I could, you know, skip over parts and things like that, so it's better if I just put those in the packet for you all to read. And so anything that would come in after that deadline, I would print out and have for you at the meeting. So everybody's comments would be provided. So that's like the biggest change. In-person list is still the same. You'll just notice that I'm really encouraging people to fill out that half sheet that we have at the entrance that has their name, their address, and then what they're hoping to comment on, just so we have everything in the minutes correctly is mainly why we do that, and then also so I can just have an idea of who's coming up to the microphone next. So that's for the in-person, there'll still be three minutes, and then people would come up to the microphone to deliver their remarks. And then virtual, so this one, we would encourage people as well to have their full name on the, on their Zoom, so we know again for the minutes who was speaking, and then we also still ask for them to record their name and address, and then they also get three minutes. So that's, that's it. It's not really that big of a change, but I just added this to our agendas, and we'll do the same for committee meetings too, just so that people know how the process works. Yeah.
Could this be put on like social media and in the newsletter?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to discuss it a little bit too.
Just so that word gets out to people, because I've had a lot of people ask me, how do they go about this?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we can absolutely do that. I will put a note to, to distribute that in the newsletter and on Facebook.
Maybe even post at the library.
Okay.
And I think we really have to enforce the name and their address, because I think sometimes we know these people, so they don't send their address, but for the record, we should still write their address.
Exactly. So just trying to clean it up a little bit, but I wanted to make sure you all knew what we were planning to do. So that's all I have for my report.
All right, Mike, come on up.
Sorry, again. But whatever your chosen name is.
I was hoping to, to give you all a really good update tonight regards to the Lions Legacy Project. However, it's still kind of sitting where it was last week at this time, so all the rain obviously didn't help anything the last couple of weeks. However, when they were excavating on the project, they found ground, they hit groundwater a lot earlier than we thought they were roughly two feet earlier than they thought they were. Whoa. However, they did go up and check it as if you are pumping more than seventy gallons per minute, you have to go and it'd be watering for a minute. They were at like sixty-five, roughly, sixty-four, sixty-five gallons. I know. So we didn't need to go that, they don't need to go that route. However, following all of the discussion and transitions from last week, they are now going to come back and excavate the area for the footings, they're gonna excavate those wider mainly so that they can get a trench box, so they can mainly go ahead and work in that site and make it an easier for them. So that's gonna push things back a little bit. Right now, we are still on schedule from Polygon, so the shipment of the shelter itself will be coming, it's supposed to come next week, so they're really trying to push this, you know, they get in and excavate on Monday and get in, start doing concrete on Tuesday and Wednesday, and next week we're right on schedule, but I mean, maybe push back just a little bit. We still have a pretty good window here for the fall. Obviously, everything will be, I mean, but in regard to the project itself, it seems to have a good handle on things, but so.
Is there a lot extra cost?
No, as of right now, we have zero change orders, even with the change to that. We were able to find some of them, some other savings within the concrete and how they're gonna bring the concrete in, so they're not using trucks, they're gonna use buggies. Or buggy, be able to come across the bridge for it, so.
So they are able to drain all that water out of the hole?
Most of it. As of right now, most of it was able to be drained. The problem that they're having is as they're draining it.
It's still
It's, well, the sides are filling in, the sides are coming in, so they're trying to come up with something like a box or some system that they can use right now to get that in.
That could be a problem, but cement is set.
No, cement in general actually cure harder, better with some water sat in there. The issue would more or less come if there happened to be cracks or any openings throughout that concrete. You don't want that, so that's why they're kind of going this extra route to make sure that.
And they put bridge, concrete bridge supports right in the water in Wisconsin.
Oh, that's good for, yeah.
Yeah, because they do the same thing. They put the box in and then take the water off.
They've talked about even using hydraulic cement if we have to, that's kind of they haven't went that route yet, but that may be something that will move to use as well, at least in the first way. And that's what they did for the acid post abutments as well.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, we'll go to general business. Number one, twenty twenty five sidewalk replacement projects, special assessment for public improvement. Since this is our first time, we got two parts and I really don't understand.
I can explain.
We'll shoot, we'll do the first one, A, discussion of possible action regarding monetary assessment resolution.
All right, so again, this is all regarding the sidewalk repair and replacement project where the village is going to tackle twenty percent of the sidewalks each year, so starting on the western portion of the village. So part of that process, because we are having residents pay for fifty percent, we have to go through a special assessment process. So this is, you know, through the state of Wisconsin, there's a very specific process that we have to go through. And one of those first steps is this preliminary resolution that I have in your packet. So this is, it says a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to the statutes. So basically what this is saying is that the village is indeed going to levy special assessments upon property owners in the assessment district, so those are just that twenty percent of those affected properties for the sidewalk repair and replacement. So it just kind of outlines, you know, the areas in which, so the lots that are affected and then just some of the other jargon that they require that we put in this preliminary resolution. So this has to be done before anything else can move forward.
Right.
Yeah, like the, like the Gilway, the Londoner, have they been, have they, who's the
Yep, so they all received a letter notifying, so the next item is a public hearing, so inviting anybody whose property is being assessed to come before the board tonight to, you know, if they have any concerns or questions. I don't know that anybody is here, but maybe there's someone online that, you know, wishes to, to say something about that, but yes, they've all been notified. They've been notified of the approximate cost, and then also, you know, of the public hearing tonight.
All right, do I have a motion?
I have a link, the motion to approve the preliminary assessment resolution presented.
Wait, we have a second?
I'll second.
They have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same.
I'll second.
You have a stating, okay.
There is also in your packets, the preliminary report, so that's like another step that has to be included. We don't have to vote on it, but it's in there as well, so we'll be coming with a final report next month.
So this preliminary assessment hearing, that's a public hearing, we gotta run it like a
Just like a public hearing, yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to go into assessment hearing?
I'll make a motion to go into assessment public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Dusty Callewier.
Yes.
Dusty Branton.
Yes.
Dusty Promowski.
Yes.
Dusty Borclin.
Yes.
Dusty Brochus.
Yes.
Dusty Borhard.
Yes.
Dustin Lightfall.
Yes. What do you want, see if anybody?
Yep, is there anyone online that wishes to speak in the public hearing? It doesn't look like it.
All righty, do I have a motion to go out of, close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
They have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Number two, discussion and possible action regarding proposed patio zoning text amendments to eighty-four point one zero eight and eighty-four point sixty-five sub J.
Sure, that's me again. All right, so here's my memo. So this is regarding just a couple of sections in the zoning code and patios, specifically patio setbacks. So this was brought to plan commission this month due to there was a resident that had come forth to the zoning board of appeals in July asking for a variance in the setback requirements. So at our plan commission meeting, we had a really good discussion about setbacks, and we had Ben Rohr, who's who's filling in for Sonia as she's out on maternity leave. So he kind of brought some ideas back to us, so we talked about a couple of proposed amendments. So the first would be in section eighty-four point one oh eight, we wanted to include a couple of other things. So it just has fencing right now, but we also wanted to include landscaping walls and decorative posts to alleviate some of the confusion as you're reading, you know, the text that's under the heading, you don't really know what or the heading should reflect the text that's underneath. And then also for section eighty-four point six five, this is where we wanted to change a little bit of the setback requirements for patios. So the, the proposed change is that patio shall have a minimum side and rear yard setback of five feet regardless of the zoning district, and shall meet the minimum right-of-way setback requirements for pavement setbacks in each zoning district. Before, it was around ten feet in most zoning districts, which even Ben said is actually pretty restrictive. And that five feet is a lot more reasonable, and the, the people too that had submitted the variance request also said that they'll be able to do the majority of their project now if, if this does indeed get changed, so. That's what I have on patio setbacks. Anything you want to add, Jay?
Nope.
All right.
So do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed patio zoning text amendments to eighty-four point one oh eight and eighty-four point six five. And I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same? All right. Three, discussion and possible action regarding proposed cross-connection zoning text amendment to chapter sixty-four, water.
Another fun one that I'll take. So this is just, I know, these are so fun. So back in May, we awarded, the village board approved engaging hydro core for our cross-connection inspections that have to happen, so remember, we're starting with the commercial, industrial, and public authority facilities, and then later on, we'll be tackling residential. But in order for this whole process to begin, in order for them to start the inspections at these commercial facilities, we just have to make sure our ordinance is up to date, and so there are a couple of proposed changes in chapter sixty-four. So this is just in our water section, which is chapter sixty-four. That, so I had to add all of these different state statutes, and then add the line, if the provisions of these sections conflict with the terms of the ordinance section, the more strict option control. So basically, just adding in some of the other, the other ordinances that need to be, you know, reflected and that they're all included in our cross-connection control program in our ordinance.
Basically, those are state, state mandate.
Yep, so we just have to do it as of, I think it was October of twenty twenty-three, they added in these, and so we just have to have them in our ordinance as well. So we would just adopt this, and this, I, I also, I see Cameron looking confused. The final section I just had to add because Paul asked me to this morning, so it was not in your packet. This final section that I have highlighted, and yep, yep. And so everything, everything else that I have here was in your packet, but Paul suggested that this will cover us even more, if we add, if the provisions of these sections conflict with the terms of the ordinance section, the more strict option control. So I am asking that this, what I have on the screen here, is what we adopt in our ordinance.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to that changes to sixty-four.
That one, but.
That, right, five, including what Charlie has proposed on the overhead.
All right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
They have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. The move. All right. Discussion regarding USDA loan and bidding update for new Village Hall Police Department.
Wait, did we skip?
Did I miss something? Oh, how could I miss that? That's been on our, on our list a long time.
How many times I haven't
Oh, man. Things that we always move in, okay. We always move it, okay, I'm sorry. Number four, discussion and possible action regarding proposed zoning, whoa, where am I? Yeah, zoning tax amendment to chapter eighty-seven, sign into regulation.
Okay, do you wanna take this one?
I'll, I'll tell you, well, I'll just really do a quick, we, we don't wanna, if you remember way back when Kelchers came here. There were some things we did, but there were some things we wanted to change in the ordinance, so. Uh, Carly and I went through some of the no brainers and change, but then there were some that we left for you guys to decide, like, do we wanna make the signs bigger? Do we wanna allow more, you wanted the language for businesses that need multiple uh sign. So we went through that and made changes, so what we wanna do tonight, I think there's probably eight or nine of them. We just wanna go through and get this off our list and do a vote yay or nay. To some of the, the changes that we've put in, so while the whole ordinance is there, it's really those small. Numbers that came from that discussion with Kelchers, do you wanna add anything more than that?
I don't think so, um, so I did, I, I only included it like a cleaned up version, so I don't have my redline version in here, Jay. Cause I thought that's what we wanted to, to move to, but I can also, I can pull that up, if that's what we wanna work off of tonight.
Well, please do, just.
Yeah, I, I, I realize I should have included both, I apologize for that.
Just the one with the diff.
Well, yeah, just, or just go through which one.
Yeah, well.
I know which ones they are, but I just don't remember where in the ordinance.
Right, I'm gonna just pull up what I had for us last month.
Yeah, my fault.
Okay, okay, well, I'm just gonna pull up exactly what I had in the packet last month, how about that?
Yeah.
Cause that was the redline version.
Yeah, that would be, I guess I did catch that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Frankly, I didn't read it, cause I wrote it so many times.
It's all good. Alright. Okay, so it looks like the first comment I have in here, in section eighty-seven point zero two. Um, I had removed scoreboard, scoreboards located on athletic fields. Because we added um a whole section on that, so that was one of the first changes that I had.
If, if you remember, that was one of the things, we wanted the signs on the fence, we did it as an alternate or. Something like that, that included scoreboards, what was it?
Like Bear Park and Raisin.
Yeah.
Right, it was specific to Bear Park.
Yeah.
So that was the first change I had.
That was to love.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm just removing it from this section.
We had another section with it, so it's a duplication.
So that's that one, and I'm just gonna scroll and make sure I don't miss.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was, I think this was a suggestion by me, and this was something that I think we've talked a little bit about. That someone had suggested having a business required sign, so that would be like a sign required by a supplier or dealer. To direct attention to their commodity or service, I pulled this from another municipality, I can't remember which one. Um, but just had added it in here to see if people liked that idea, um because that was something too that. Then you could ask for the letter of requirement from the business that they should, need to be, or um showing that specifically.
Goes into the total.
Yeah, it's incorporated into the square footage, so that was added after a discussion we had had. Um, so this one, this one was moved, so this, this definition, um definitions were later in the code. And so we moved them up.
Yeah, if you remember at the beginning of the, and then at the end they had definitions, so I said, let's put them all together, cause. You don't wanna read through the whole thing and then find the definition, so.
So that was just moving those up?
Yeah, no change, just moving on.
Yep. And the formatting's all weird, we'll figure that out. So that's all still the definitions. Um, and then pylon, I think we need to still keep pylon, I just didn't know if we wanted it still because they're not permitted anymore. But I think we still need to know what the definition of a pylon is, okay, so I'll just resolve that.
Everybody, I'm gonna go, go through, if you have a big objection, you know, raise it, cause otherwise we're just gonna approve the whole thing, not every one of these. But if there's an objection, let's talk about it and make a change that everybody's happy with.
And then these are just a lot of the photos and the examples. Alright, and then now we're into permitted signs by zoning district. Um, these were here already, I did not add these, so all of these stayed the same, all of the zoning districts. Um, and then this was one, so the permitted signs by purpose configuration in zoning district, the business required sign, so again, that's the one we added. Um, we added, we said they were not permitted in any of the zoning districts except Main Street mixed use. Um, community mixed use and business park and industrial, we did not allow them and single family, multifamily. Or anything like that. People in agreement?
Fair with that?
Okay. Um, alright, and this is where things get a little, so this is the.
The first one is the size, this is the one that we kinda.
Yeah.
How much square footage right now, ours is one foot, one square foot per linear foot. Uh, if you remember, I think, I don't remember, it's either nasal does two, Black Earth does a total of five.
Black, yeah, Black Earth shall not exceed five hundred.
Yeah, so basically what I, what we did is we doubled it. Maybe one for one to two, because we allow more, you know, potentially more signs, so.
So two square, two square feet of sign area per one foot of building, frontage.
In the packet, I don't think the diff part happened, cause it says twelve square feet of sign per um foot of building.
Okay, well, I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use this, and then I will.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know.
The rubber, careful.
Okay, thank you.
Twelve square feet of sign.
So that's resolved, okay, so we have two square feet.
Is everybody comfortable with that? I have one question.
Yeah.
So it says two square feet, but at the bottom, we're still keeping in at least fifty square feet and no more than two hundred square feet per business?
Is that what you'd like, you're gonna max out at two hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
It doesn't make much sense, does it?
I rarely have seen a business that has one of the two hundred square.
Oh, really? Oh, so does that make sense then?
Well, if you're trying, okay, so like, our thing was with like the Kelcher compliment, right?
Yeah.
That one, the building to the north that had the three that were like that, and then it had those other two.
Yeah.
That was two hundred square footage of sign, that is what two hundred square foot lost like.
Okay.
Like, cause I was like, let me go and figure out like how big.
Okay.
So that's what two hundred square foot looks like.
I'm comfortable with that, then.
I mean, if you're maxing it out at two hundred, if you're doing the doubling, then you're keeping that top lid on it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so.
Is, okay, for Kelcher then, if we didn't have that, uh, if it, with the two square feet. Could they actually have more signage if we didn't, you know what I mean, like?
Y- yes, um.
So we're actually limited, so they are limited because of the size of their building.
Right.
Okay.
Well, no, it's not the size of the building, it's the maximum amount of the building that can be covered, two hundred feet puts a cap on.
That because we're now allowing this two square feet, one foot, cause their building is so big, they're actually going to be limited.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right, right.
See, so answering, answering your question, so the way that I did that, I didn't go down and measure the front of the building, you just go down D set maps and just use like the linear thing.
Yeah.
And that front of that building was two hundred square feet long, so it is two hundred feet long. So by the old ordinance, they have two hundred square feet.
Right.
So now, if you were wanting them to have more, they couldn't put anymore on.
Right.
They are, that is the most amount of signage with the two hundred feet limited on there.
So you're thinking of, I'll beat that? No, you wanna drop it.
No, no, they don't wanna drop it, I'm just saying, this, this does kind of hurt larger buildings. Whereas like smaller buildings, they won't be affected at all by it, because they can only have the two square feet per linear foot.
Let's see what you're saying, cause we're basically not fixing the problem that presented.
Well, we're fixing the problem, we're doubling it.
Making it so that we're not limiting.
Cause they're not in compliance right now, right?
What if we kept, just for discussion, what if we kept at least fifty square feet? And eliminated no more than two hundred square feet, would that, would that break anything?
Well, you're looking at Kelchers, they could put the double the number of signs that you see right now there. If you didn't have the cap.
Would there be something you could put in there where?
No, I think the idea was to, the biggest, the main idea, what they came in is having more than two sign.
Yeah.
They wanted multiple signs, I don't think they really were so much, I guess the one building to the south. Probably was problematic, the tin building, you know, cause that's not as long, and they had what, four signs on that?
Four signs.
So this would help that for sure, because it's doubling the size. But the other side of the building where he's saying is the, the long building, you would, could put double the signs there.
Yeah.
And the question is, how much signage do you want on a bill, cause now you're at four hundred.
Yeah, right.
And that's why it might be Black Earth and a five hundred. Yeah, it does.
On the west side of town, when you come in on fourteen, you're going east of fourteen, there's that walking across players. Signed up, we, we approved to be painted.
Oh, the murk mural?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How big is that?
Oh, that, but that doesn't apply.
I understand, I'm just trying.
Forty by sixty or something like that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get perspective.
Oh.
Yeah. That had just said like if PIs got a really huge building, they would be more than two hundred feet if, if they could, I mean, if they wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, a building like, yeah, I'm doing it.
Well, yeah, so they, they essentially could, but almost like a mural size.
You would be putting like, yeah, large, and.
Yeah, so.
And if you're, if you're removing, so you're also removing the number of signs.
Yeah.
So it means you can put up a bazillion small ones if you want to.
So I just think we should just.
Keeping the cap in place, cause I rarely, there aren't a lot of buildings that are longer than tumors, that, that are longer than. A hundred, a hundred linear feet like this, in an area where they'd be wanting to put a sign, like, I mean.
Think that they could just like completely cope like one.
I, I think it's important to have a cap, the question is, is this reasonable enough that? You know, with, with Michael's example, I'm fine with the two hundred.
But this would bring Kelchers into compliance per the ordinance.
Provided they are under two hundred square feet total, cause they don't have the number requirement.
I think they, that's little shit, they have those signs only four by four.
Yeah, that little shit, I kinda went down to some base measurements, if you do this doubling. They're really close, the signage might be a little bit over, but I wasn't down with the ruler, I was just kinda like, this is five feet or six feet or whatever, it's.
Oh, then I can't take that.
Well, but it really, but it's really close, I mean, I was like, doing it, I was like, at the doubling, they're gonna be right.
Are you good with this?
No, I'm gonna vote against.
And I want two fifty.
Yeah, I wanna vote against the side.
When he's trying to help us get through.
Is it knowledge or is it kinda, it looks like five feet?
Oh, no, let's keep it at this.
Well, no, no, we're gonna do the whole.
Okay, so people like it.
Not a hat, is, is everybody okay with keeping that?
Yeah, well, because of just reading it, I was like, okay, how well does this fit in with what Kelchers was, like?
Yeah.
What would happen to, but like.
Yeah, well, it's a good thing you did that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if you're trying to compare it and, yeah, I mean, you're completely removing the number of signs being gone, which. Could lead to a lot of signage, it could lead to a.
So, I think we're.
Think we're moving on?
Yeah.
But, okay.
Anything else, Michael?
So now though, I'm gonna white out something, so it's two hundred square feet per business. So that means if they wanna put signs on.
But, but they still gotta meet the two, two square foot thing.
But it's, yeah.
It's not automatically, it has a cap on it, but you still gotta meet the two time linear.
I understand, but what I was saying is that what if you have a business with three walls, you're easily gonna hit. A hundred feet of linear wall, if you looked at like where Jack and Tabby says, that thing's like sixty across the front, each side, so.
Isn't that based on frontage though?
We're just, we're removing facade and frontage, it's two hundred square feet per business. And you're saying per building frontage, building frontage, so on the front of the building, if there's sixty feet and you're giving them two now, now they can put a hundred and twenty on the front. But that only means that they can put forty and forty on each side, cause you're limiting it to two hundred square feet for business. Which is, okay, just letting you know on what, what is. Yes, it is a lot of signage, I agree, whereas before they would have only been, they would have been allowed. The same, well, yeah, I mean, they probably would have maxed out anyway, but, yeah. But they would have only been allowed two sides, they wouldn't, now they're gonna be allowed the signs on three sides, cause before it was not to see two.
Sorry.
Sorry, but this is where.
On three sides, with these restrictions, so they still couldn't get over two hundred square feet. Some, some, the sum of all three sides, right?
Okay, yes, yes, that is, that is correct, that's. But they could put. Two signs on each wall and three on the front, so they have technically seven signs, but as long as it's under two hundred square feet, yeah.
Buy a business in town and put the signs everywhere. Uh, buy a business in town, put the signs everywhere.
Alright.
Alright, moving on?
Yeah.
Everybody, okay.
Okay, but then I have one other question.
Okay.
This deals with the business related sign, what exactly is that trying to address when we're talking about that? Is that just like, specific, like, that's like if they are, like, if it isn't Jack and Tabby's and they're selling.
A prime example of that would be. Like, there's a sign Napa Auto Service Center, in order to get his discounts, that sign has to be up there, to get his wholesale pricing. To be in Napa Service Center, that has to be posted on the building.
But was that in relation, sorry, the, I, to the fact that um Kelcher had. Too many signs, like the number of signs, cause now we're not counting the number, I, I'm just curious.
That was that, but it was also over the limit.
Okay.
Square footage.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if it was, I was just wondering if it was just solely relating to number, then maybe you don't need it, but it sounds like we still want it.
Whoa, okay, yeah, that's. Okay, well, let's say he isn't getting a discount from somebody and Penzoil wants to advertise on his wall now. See, now, now that's an advertisement and that's not business related, cause he's not getting a wholesale discount.
Yes or no?
For, see, that's where it becomes different.
Well, I thought that's where we asked for the what.
Right, so that's what, uh, the definition, it said that we would also require a letter, saying that it's necessary.
So if it isn't.
That they display. It's for a product.
It needs to be a business.
Right, that's what, just making sure. Yeah, no, no, we're, yes, I hear where you're coming from.
That's where I feel like we covered.
Yeah, so do I.
Yeah.
So that was just that other aspect of it.
Yeah. Yeah, no?
Okay. We're all good on this section?
Yeah.
Everyone, Michael, okay.
I'm not. No, no. We're not gonna get there anyway, so.
Can I hope you scroll fast?
I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything, I'm sorry. Um, I just, I noted here that the graphic would need to be adjusted if only using gross square footage. Cause this was like the location with all of these, the building frontage, the, you know, all of those things would need to be changed. Or just removed, or if people.
Is removal.
If we aren't limiting sign having to be on frontage or facing a parking lot anymore, it's only, it's only if you want to. Put some restriction and they can't put a sign at the, that side of the building is facing a residential area, like directly houses behind you. You wanted some restriction like that, because there's no possibility for public really to be back there. That was the whole entire idea of a, of a sudden parking lot, where people are gonna be in the public seeing.
That's what I would do, I mean, if people, I mean, signs are expensive to put it on the back of a building that faces. You know, where no one can see it, I, I just. That just didn't seem like. That would be worth the money. It was just an idea. No, no, I I appreciate it, yeah.
That was to head there, we'll remove it. It might be.
No, there's another one.
Oh, there is? Okay, we'll get there eventually.
I know at the end we moved everything to the top, but.
I know, it's it's a sign, it's it basically says if if those people get more compliant, we're not gonna.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Permits shall not be required for changes that make a sign more compliant with the sign code.
Now, um, Sonya made a really good point on this. I thought this was a no brainer, but why not? They're making the sign. Her position was, well, if there's a sign you wanna get rid of, you know. For whatever reason. If you have that in there, they can basically replace it. Because it may become, something will change to make it more compliant versus having them make. It where they'd have to replace it. So I went through town like Michael did, and I said, are there any signs here that I think are? Inappropriate or ugly or whatever. I couldn't find one, but I I think her point is well taken. You do give up your power to replace a particular sign. So it wasn't. As straightforward as I thought. I thought more compliant people get the better, but. You're giving people an out on something that you would say. You gotta replace it.
There's a room for abuse.
Yeah, I guess that's. Now, again, like you say, I can't come up with a sign where.
Or they could change their sign every year. As long as it was. Like, I mean, they could make it different.
Made these changes, are there really going to be that many people whose signs? Are.
Could be. I I'd have to go, I I I don't know if all the signs on Bourbon Road need code right now even with it, cause it's more the style and.
It's probably so few.
I agree.
That those few people who actually have to do the permit, is it? Like if you want this out.
It was just a point that, you know, to me, I thought it made total sense. You know, here's Kelcher wanting to make their sign six inches smaller, which makes it closer to making it cold. Why wouldn't we allow that?
Yeah.
I like where your thought process is that, I'm glad she mentioned something. I'd be in favor of deleting it, cause anywhere where you can remove the chance for abuse.
But if someone then fills out the permit, that is making it more compliant, she has to automatically deny it, doesn't she?
No, I I would just say shall not be required.
Doesn't, I mean, if we take this out.
Yeah, he.
Oh.
If we we move that. So we don't, there isn't that. Flexibility and, yeah, I hear what you're.
Yeah, are they, I haven't filled it out, but they're actually going to get denied.
You're more often than not gonna run into someone like Kelcher who's just trying to.
Yeah. I just wanna, Sonya brought that point off and I thought it was a very valid point that clearly I didn't think of.
Right, so that's why I almost think we should. Remove it for her point. Because I don't think we're going to run, uh, isn't that what you were saying?
No, I think he's saying the opposite.
I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying, let's be more permissive or not permissive, that's wrong. Let's be. Easier on the businesses, you know, permit not required for changes that make sign more compliant with the sign code. I just think we're. More likely than not to run into a good situation instead of a, oh, we're trying to get rid of the sign and now we can't because. They don't have to get permits, you don't get our our prick at it.
Yeah.
I don't know if that happens, we'll come back to the sign policy next game.
I I like I say, it, this is one that's a. Uh, flip up. For me, it was one way, but like I say, she brings up a good point. I agree with with Cody on one point of it, but then again. I'm with Cameron saying, the odds are it's gonna be more on the positive side than the negative side.
If you'd have never said that, I'd have never thought of that.
I think having reviews of signs and having permits is a good thing, because it makes sure that you're compliant with the code. I mean. Not requiring one, but it makes it more compliant, that's. Generalized, I mean.
But would you allow her to approve it?
He's voting against it, Jay.
Well, I know all of it, I'm just saying on this part, I'm trying to figure out what's the way of getting that.
She doesn't approve it, it'll just come to us and then we could prove it.
Yeah.
And uh so.
Yeah, maybe that.
Michael is making a good point.
Yeah.
For conversions and changes in sign structure, that means if they're making, you know, if they're making it longer, they're making it shorter, you still wanna make sure it's compliant with the two hundred square foot and the linear thing. That's why they're paying a permit, cause somebody's gonna do that legwork to validate that.
So you'd like get rid of it totally?
This is, the sign permit is needed.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know. I think this was just a comment that I had added after one of our initial. Discussions. That, you know, cause I think a lot of Kelchers. You know, that was what kind of came out of that is that, you know, they're. They're compliant with the code, there's just too many of them.
I was reading this.
Yeah, I was reading the same too.
No, we've read the stuff in there.
So I'm gonna delete this.
Yeah, we were all talking about the.
My comment, sorry. Okay, so we'll just keep, we'll keep everything that's highlighted and just get rid of my comment.
That means. You know, again, again.
That they're all coming over my desk, across my desk.
Yeah, I know, which is, I thought half of the reason you've been talking about this the last four meetings was to prevent that. I think Kelchers had a lot of signs, a lot of issues, but they they already had a permit, right? That one, it just kills me. They were reducing the size by six inches and they need to, we need to talk to it for two hours.
That was why I.
Yeah, that's what.
So I'm I disagree then with all of you. I say we remove number two.
Right, but I I think.
Gotta make it easier on the businesses.
But and and I'm gonna agree with you on that part of it, but I think. We've been having a lot of, this is gonna help. Uh, Carly. Get a lot of signs through. That are appealed. This one probably will come through appeal each time, but I'm kinda with Michael on that. We should have a shot if we want that to happen, or no, we want the sign removed. I I think that gives us some flexibility, so I'm kinda with that. I understood. Originally I was with Cameron, but then when Sonya made that, she made a heck of a good point.
Well, I felt like even he even talked to us, he said, this is what we vote for, like it's part of the process. I think one of the reasons we should leave it in there is because we have so many right now that are just grandfathered in. And I'm afraid people are gonna come and say, I just replaced my sign, what do you mean? Not realizing they're not really in code because they're already just grandfathered in. So those are the ones we're gonna catch. I feel like by keeping it in there. Uh, people might, they they might think they're in compliance and they're really not, you know what I mean? Because they're grandfathered.
So. Um. Is that, is that gonna be a? A no brainer for you, cause then we'll pull it out and do it separate. I mean, I'm sorry, uh. A what?
Show stuff.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Not not a hill I'm willing to die on.
All right.
So I'm gonna remove my comment.
Yeah, remove your comments, we'll keep this as is when we vote, so that so everybody knows that'll stay here.
All right, you have another one too, Phil.
Okay, thanks, I'm just trying to delete this one. So I don't, there we go, perfect. And then I had here, I had. The business building conundrum, cause we were kind of discussing that initially too. The zoning, so sign permit application, this is just what everything should be included in their application, and then they include their zoning designation and use of the. Business or building for which the sign will provide information. I think we were talking about using business more. So I just. Wanna make sure that's right.
It's kinda weird, some of your, well, none of the changes came through. Cause it says building.
Okay.
But I thought we were looking at something earlier in the change, those, anyway, it says building. It says business anyways?
It says business and then and then wind out the building.
This, this is what I'm editing, everyone.
All right.
And this one isn't in the packet, this what I'm working on right now is not in tonight's packet.
Yeah.
Okay, cause this is the redline version and I did not have the redline version in the pack. So I'm working off of last month's redlined.
Sure.
What was in the packet, okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Thank you.
You got more.
Okay. Um, just didn't know if this was excessive or not. Signage plans shall be approved and stamped by a professional engineer.
We haven't enforced that yet.
I haven't done it yet. I mean, I don't know, my predecessors had. I just wasn't doing it, so I just thought maybe we should remove.
And we're talking about the part in the rep to be.
And my comment was, this seems excessive. Okay, so I'm gonna.
This seems excessive, but we're gonna.
I'm gonna delete this comment and then I'm gonna also delete G. Okay. Which I think, I think it'll do it. I think it's on track changes, perfect. All right, do we have anything else, Bill? We've been working on this for months, Jay. Since like January, I think.
It's more like years.
Okay. Uh, nonconforming signs. Um, I had a comment that nonconforming signs may also be brought into compliance without moving to a new location. And. Nonconformers shall not be altered or moved. So basically if a sign is not compliant, they can't move it.
Altered.
What if they're trying to?
But I think that was, yeah, what my comment was, is that. What if they're being brought into compliance?
Oh.
Like it would have to be.
Why wouldn't we want that to happen?
That's why they're just removing that sign. We have a new sign.
Well, no, I I'm reading is there, let's say it's. It's a. It's too long and they they bring it in, they cut off some sides and make it more into compliant. Why wouldn't we want that?
But that's not what it's saying.
Yeah, it's, this is, okay, I got, I got a nonconforming sign on one side of my building. I just wanna move it to the other side of my building. If we, if we keep this. They have to come to us for.
Right, and I agree with that part of it, but what if it's on that side and it's too big and they decide to trim it off to make it. Conforming.
Yeah.
Why would we not want that?
But it's not, but here's the thing, this is kinda going back to what we were talking about before. Is this is only talking about. Moving a sign. Not changing it on the same side of the.
Yeah, so so that was basically what the.
Or move.
What my suggestion was, is that they could be brought into compliance without moving them to a new location, whereas here it says.
Yeah, I don't understand that.
Well, doesn't this? I thought, doesn't this just mean, you bring it into compliance? It's fine.
Right.
So maybe that is just what I'm saying.
They're saying you could alter a nonconforming sign and it still isn't being brought into compliance. They're saying if you're altering it, it has to be brought into compliance.
Yeah.
That's what it's basically saying.
Or moving it, it has to be brought in.
So maybe that was the comment for me to know what it was saying.
Okay.
I've looked at this too many times, okay, I'm deleting this.
Yeah.
But you can alter the nonconforming sign and it's still not in compliance.
Right, guys. Okay, that makes sense.
Sorry for the confusion. That's it, okay. All right.
I didn't notice. Uh, they go, they jumped from eighty seven dot one three to eighty seven dot one five. At the end here, so there's just a missing.
Oh, yeah, because we moved it to this top. Cause we moved those definitions.
The definitions eighty seven.
Yeah, these ones.
We put them all together.
We just moved them up. So we have to, I have to renumber.
Okay, that's what I was. I didn't, okay. Renumber, just so they, I was just reading it last night, I was like, wait, one three, one five, we're we're working on, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
We have a motion.
For what?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve all the changes to the uh, to the village ordinance. Eighty.
Chapter eighty seven.
Chapter eighty seven. That were discussed. Uh, um. And documented at this meeting.
All right, I have a motion to set, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay, no.
That doesn't count as two votes.
All right. There's a hopefully nothing good until at least next year.
Or longer, please.
This seems to come up every year. All right, here we go, number five, discussion regarding USDA loan and bidding update. For new Village Hall Police Department.
All right, so I got quite a bit here, but but I wanna, um, so I wanna go through two things. I wanna go through. Just an update we received on the USDA loan, so that was the rural development loan um that Brian had found. Um, and then I also wanna talk about um the bidding update, so our last meeting, um. We, or the village board approved um going up for bid, um so I also wanna pass this along, um. I got this from Wool this evening. Um, this is just a listing of all of the changes that were made to the original um bid documents. So those that happened during um the meeting that we had, um, we had a larger meeting that we had invited you all to. Um, and then some subsequent meetings, smaller group meetings, um so they put together, you know, what our comment was and then Wool's response for each of those items. But like I said, I received those at like six o'clock tonight, so. Hence why they are. Um, listed that way, so I'll allow you to, you guys can all take a look at those and then. Um, they will be providing um all of the, so all of the bid documents that will be actually being sent out. Um, will be, so the whole package that'll be going out for bid, we'll be getting a copy of that. Um, which should arrive tomorrow or Wednesday here at um Village Hall, so we'll have those. Um, in the conference room again for folks to review. Um, so. Yeah, as you're paging, I don't know how we wanna, do you wanna page through these, do you wanna?
No, we're not, here's, here's what I suggest.
Okay.
If this is okay with the group, cause some of you are not gonna understand what this says because they're coming.
Yeah.
Staff. Has to, or anybody that, uh, I know Michael was involved too. Made any comments on the bid documents that we originally looked at. Make sure that it's covered in here, and if it's not, let Carly know.
Yes, please.
All right, well, even both ways, if you know. You know, that everything's good, let her know that's everything good. And then I think what we need to do when those bid documents come in. You've gotta take this and make sure it's incorporated into the bid document.
Absolutely.
So if it's here, we gotta make sure it's there, otherwise we're. So, I don't know if the board needs to do anything.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
That you're seeing that the people that reviewed the big, the bid documents, these are where they came up, where we saw. Where things were left out or needed to be changed. And like I say, there were some major things that we caught. It always helps having a bunch of eyes look at these things and then come back multiple times and, um. Just so you know, I took them, my neighbor does. Does this, looks over bids uh for a living for City of Madison, so he's viewed them. And then there was someone that's on on the original one that builds high end houses, he viewed it, so. We ended up getting some experts to look at it and staff has looked at it and caught a lot of errors and. I caught a few things too, so I'm getting comfortable that we're getting that, we just gotta make sure everything's. There, then. Have you put something in the paper yet?
So I wanna go through my timeline.
Coming down, okay.
Yep, stealing my thunder, Jay.
Well, no, no, I just. That's the first process we have to do.
Yep, so then what they're planning to do is, so once we give them the okay that, you know, everything matches. So we have to get the documents, of course, um then they plan to send it out to their um electronic. Um, kind of like bid servicer, so then, um, so that could be as soon as tomorrow, this is just like a suggestion, but we obviously don't have the other plans. Um, so that's the first step. Um, and then the plan would be for us to submit the ad for the bid in the paper to be published next Thursday. Um, so that would be on the fourth of September. And then they're saying that they could have a deadline for bidder questions on September twenty second at five o'clock. Um, and then they would, so this is just some of their internal stuff, they'd have a final addendum issued to bidders on the twenty fourth. And then the bid opening would happen here at Village Hall on October first. Um, at two o'clock is what their plan is, um and then they would have a recommendation. Letter to the village board on October third. Um, so they, so this is a little bit pushed out from the last timeline that we had had. I think they were under the impression that. We had um a village board meeting on the twenty ninth of September, which we don't, um and so they were. Um, they agreed to have the village board approval on Monday, October sixth, so that's a planned commission day. So I have later in the agenda, um just to vote on. have the village board approval on Monday, October sixth. So that's a planned commission day. So I have later in the agenda, um, just to vote on if that would be.
So we would look to come.
Look to have the board come together.
Come at six, this plan is at six thirty, so we'd come at six. Three of us are already there.
Yeah.
So.
So that's the plan, that was, this is the tentative timeline. Um, so that's kind of what I have on the timeline. Does anybody have any?
No, October sixth, we have.
Oh, yes, we would.
But we do have one September second.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But then October sixth, okay, God.
Yeah, so this would just.
To their, where the board would meet ahead, I would guess.
Yeah, just a little special meeting ahead of time to award the bid, if if that's what the board chooses to do.
Yeah, exactly, and that's the whole thing.
Right, um. So that kind of brings me into, unless there's any questions about the timeline and reviewing everything.
We really gotta get going on this then.
I think so, yeah.
Yes, couple days.
Well, we haven't received the.
Right, like we'll go get that.
Yeah, which they should be sending tomorrow or the next day. So as soon as we have that, then we need to move into high gear. Um, okay, so that's timeline. Um, and then we received some not-so-great news about the USDA loan. Um, and so, so basically because they're so understaffed, um, there were a lot of layoffs uh, with the current presidential administration. Um, so they were saying that they would need three to five months to review our documents, um, or reports before we would be allowed to go out for bid if we were gonna use that funding mechanism. So basically, we would have to, instead of following this timeline, we would have to go out for bid in spring of twenty-six if we are to use that loan. Um, and so Bobby and I have been talking to, you know, other administrators, other finance directors, just kind of about this loan. Um, and so I can show you too, I've got some, some graphics we have from LRS. Um, that kind of show, well, I don't wanna, I guess I don't wanna get there right quite yet, but, um, so there's a couple of options. So we could we could hold off, which we just don't feel is a feasible option, to wait until spring of twenty-six, considering how close we are to going out for bid like any day. Um, and so, so that's still the app, still an option, but you have to wait like the eight to nine months. Um, or, um, and then you would also have um, a debt service cost that would be four point three million higher um, with the USDA RD loan, um. Or, um, we could finance this with GO debt um, entirely. So what was kind of, kind of discussed as um, kind of a meet in the middle kind of a thing is that we go out to bid now, we see what everything comes back at, if the board is comfortable um, at that point, um, we could, you know, we have the debt capacity. Um, that's a benefit that our community has, that a lot of communities don't have, that are pursuing the RD loan, um, for that forty-year loan. Um, so that's, that's kind of what we were thinking is we could um, finance with the GO debt, the seven million. Um, and then, um, if, if, if bids come back way too high, for instance, then we'd have time to do the USDA. We'd have time to get everything reviewed. So if, if we didn't, you know, if bids came back way too high and that the board was like, absolutely not, then we could go back to the drawing board and go with USDA, yeah, please.
I was gonna say that seven million is, are like our eight and a half million dollar estimate. But in the budget memo, we had said we're gonna try to paper some of this with cash. So our hope is that we only have to borrow seven million, none of the project will come in at seven. So.
Thank you.
To be a question.
Thank you. And then we did have LRS kind of put some projections together for you, so those are in the packet as well of, you know, the option one with the all GO debt versus the option two, the the GO debt and the rural development or USDA loan.
So just some, uh, uh, so we would, with USDA, you're looking, we, if we want GO versus USDA, we're saving about four million in, in interest over the forty years.
Mm-hmm.
The other side is that we do all GO uh, borrowing then, it's about eighty-five thousand more a year for the cost for twenty years. So that's what you're, so you're gonna be paying a little bit more with one, but you're saving a full hold on interest.
Say that number again?
I think it was eighty-five thousand, wasn't it? Yeah, eighty-five thousand for the first
twenty.
Yeah, twenty years, if you can look at, yeah, five point, it's four point three million. I know.
Ten, twenty, is that one?
So, yeah, just, so I'm sorry, four point three million. We would pay more in interest.
Is it the USDA loan?
Yes, cause it's a forty-year loan instead of a.
Forty-year and it's five point two five.
But the whole point of going with USDA loan was that you got a lower interest rate from municipalities, but five point two five seems high.
I was cleaning up my desk today and I found some notes from when I was at a conference a couple of years ago. And on my notes, I had current USDA rate was like two point something or.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it's five point two five now.
So I think when we were originally looking at it, the interest rate was.
Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and here's where I think, what it is, is they're going off of like, you know, the mo- mortgage rate. While the other option, we're going for municipal bonds. So the interest rate is gonna be lower because you don't pay taxes on that interest. But that's what I'm guessing.
Municipalities never go for this.
The ones that need to go forty years, cause your payment is, in this case, eighty-five thousand bucks.
Take a larger, take a longer loan with a higher interest rate? I mean, or higher interest.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
They don't have the money, they don't.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I think.
So my question is like, I have parks and rec, I've got, I've got a pool in my head.
Yeah.
Once, if we go with the GO debt, what is that, how does that leave us for paying to build a pool in the next five years?
I would have to look at what our debts, I mean, we'd have to look at what our debt service is. I mean, obviously, there's the capacity cause we're only using seven million out of.
There'd be twenty-three million left.
Well.
If the entire project was, that was what others was projecting.
No, that's right now, so you'd have to subtract the seven for the municipal building.
Hmm.
So you'd be down to.
Six. No, no, it says twenty-three million if you borrowed.
If entire project.
If entire project, so twenty-three would be the remainder post, post borrowing for the building.
That was what I interpreted it as.
Fifty million dollars. Right, so there's still.
Right, no, I'm just asking for the, is the room there, right? Cause yeah, the room is there to borrow, what, what is, what we have to look at more is where our, our debt is going down and there is another break somewhere in there that it was a drop, but I just don't, I don't have it memorized.
Just with pool, and we'll get to this later in the CFP, but it did move out of here somehow.
Oh.
So let's discuss that.
Has others put this out to bid yet? For any.
No.
No?
No, they're looking.
No, this was the projections, yeah.
But on their page, they have what they, yeah, current, what they've they've done bonds and what people are, what they're getting.
So to refresh though, the eight and a half million dollar we're figuring, figure we're looking at, right? That's based off finished, built-out square foot of the seventeen thousand square foot. In the event that comes back at ten, eleven, twelve million dollars. What do we, what options do we have now? We've had this much invested.
Well, we have, we, we have to re, we have to really talk about that. There isn't a quick answer I can give you. We have to really research it. The good news is, who are we talking to? They went out for a bid and it was much lower. They were expecting it to be like twelve million and came in.
Pete was mentioning it about Pittsburgh, right?
Was it Pittsburgh you were talking about, that the bid came in real low?
Yeah, it came in way under what they thought.
The work is.
That's cool.
We should just wait and see.
Yeah, we'll just gotta wait. And I hear where you're coming from, it's just, we could spend all night coming off, let's just see what the bid is and then what we move forward.
Yeah, I just, I was curious and I was wondering if any of that was in any other board members' brains, that there is a.
Absolutely.
It's mine.
Right.
Squawking about it for three meetings now.
And, and the longer it takes you to build something, the more it's gonna cost.
It does. I mean, we're gonna just have to really, there's a number of options, right? You can make the buildings smaller, we can wait until go and get the USDA, we can wait until economic times change a little bit. The thing is, we've got a product that it's dumb, right? So you're right, we could save more, you know, put more in savings. I mean, there's we just have to figure it out and it's gonna be probably a little of everything.
Then that one point, I mean, so if if we go with option two, I mean, I guess I'm sort of, this is, this is GO debt, seven million with a one point five million dollar down payment. Where are we getting that one point five million? Is this what we talked about?
Well, my budget memo, it, it had, I can tell you.
So that came from the zero percent increase in operating budgets from departments and stuff?
No, no, it came from six hundred thousand, I think, six hundred and sixty thousand or something from uh, fund balance that were over the twenty percent. And then we're gonna get three hundred and forty thousand dollars from this building, so we're at a million bucks right there.
That's right.
And then if we get the uh, grant, that's another two hundred and fifty thousand. So there's the twelve fifty and I was hoping that other committees would write grants and give us the other two hundred and fifty, then you're at your fifth, you're one point five million.
Six hundred from fund balance.
Yep.
Three hundred from the sale of this building. And then maybe a grant, maybe grants to cover the last five hundred.
Yeah, we have one grand for two hundred and forty right now.
Okay. Uh, we have, I mean, I know we have it, but like.
No, we'll, we're supposedly, according to Mike in the past, they'd let us know in September if we're still on.
No, I'm circling back to the six hundred from fund balance. Like, I know the money's there, but is that like reasonable to just allocate that to an out payment?
Well, we can do whatever we want to with it, but it's like, if an emergency happens, we need fifty grand, another type, that's like, we'll use it for.
Right, but I'm not going below the twenty, it's twenty, at least twenty-one percent in there. And our policy is to keep it at twenty to twenty-five percent. And it's that, I think the last time I figured we were at thirty or thirty-one percent.
Right, I understand that.
So we can easily afford fifty grand out of it. Twenty percent of our budget is probably seven hundred thousand, I'm guessing.
Fifty, oh. Cause I said, I use fifty grand as an example.
Yeah, so we'll, we still have.
Yeah, we have that much over.
Yeah.
So basically, we gotta put it out to bid, see what it's gonna cost and then.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, yeah.
Well, I still wanna, um, trying to just make sure, learn as much about these, so we're especially if we're only in a thirty-minute meeting, when we have the.
Well.
I mean, that's.
Here's the bottom line. If, if it comes in at ten, twelve, y- you know, I, I mean, we'll probably just postpone it then, cause there's no way we can finagle that kind of money. I'm sorry. I, like I say, they said to us, they were very conservative in um, the bid that the, the estimate, the last estimated, and they were including like a five percent increase in materials and, like, I mean, they, they made it high, so the way it sounds to me, there's no way it's gonna be higher than that. If anything, it'll be lower. So.
Sure, I agree. Let's just see what happens.
Yeah.
See what the bitch comes out.
Huh?
Do we need a motion for it out of bid?
Uh.
You already did that last meeting. This is more of an update. I don't, I don't know if there's anything.
It was more of USDA loans, not as rosy as it sounded. I don't know, when we were looking at selling this building, when Brian had brought that up, it was like two point seven five, and I was like, you'd be a fool not to make.
Yeah.
But now you might be a fool to do it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't know.
Um, can you remind me what the, I guess twenty percent of refund balance is, the one dollar amount approximately?
It was over seven, like, well, it's over seven hundred, but under eight.
Right, between seven and eight is basically the minimum that we're supposed to keep on hand.
It's in the, um, budget memo that I wrote, has the breakdown.
Mm-hmm.
You just have to look that up and, and that doesn't include any money that we would put in from this year. Right, is there anything else you want?
No, that's pretty much the update.
This is kind of the update. We're gonna let this thing roll and let's just hope for the best.
Yeah.
All right, uh. Okay, number six, discussion and possible action regarding purchase of DS three hundred ballot tabulator.
So recently, a day, funny clerk's meeting, and they said that they're no longer gonna be servicing our current, where we put your ballot in to get counted. Uh, they came out with a new model, and so they want us to transition into those in the next couple of years. Um, and so then I met with our chief inspectors to kinda talk about some other things, but we talked about like the flow of elections, right? So now with the bed books, the checking in is really fast, and so then people are getting file-locked at the end. So we thought, what else? We have two machines where people can feed their ballots. That will really help also with like processing the absentee ballots. Um, so for twenty twenty-five, we only had two elections, so I still have a good chunk of money in my elections budget, so my plan or my proposal here is to purchase one of the new machines this year. Um, and then we'll run one new and one old. And then in twenty twenty-seven, it'll be another slow election year. You should be able to do the same thing, where we're using operating budget to pay for a second one.
Still.
So, every four years, November, during the presidential election, we run into a huge problem in the tabulator where around two or three o'clock in the afternoon, they, the, the ballots were jammed up because of only so much storage below. Uh, so what we had to do in the last presidential election is around one o'clock in the afternoon, we, we pulled all the ballots out, we had to put them in a sealed, and what was not ideal. But this emptied the, the basket for us to be able to continue doing ballots. So having the second tabulator, uh, along with, you know, not having any updates to the DS two hundred, which kind of concerns me a lot. Uh, I think it, it would be a really good, it would be a benefit to how things are flowing and seeing as our population's increasing in the village. You know, we're, it's just gonna get worse, so I really support this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we want to get to a time too, where we actually have to do two poll applications. So now if we already have two tabulators, it's a lot easier to promote.
Isn't the hall, the new village hall gonna be able to handle an election?
Absolutely, we feel one.
I just wanted to make sure.
Cause it, but it was interesting, cause one of the people who examined our plan, they did pick up that you know, it's limited how long the line can be inside the building before you go outside, just because of the length of the hallways and where the room is, but yes, we, we are looking to run our elections in our building and not be at anybody's. Uh.
Well, if we had a snake.
Well.
Starting the children's section, running through fiction.
At, at, at one point, right, you got so many people, it's not really the size of the building, that like, you like, you need a second group of people checking IDs and a second group of people handing, you know, to you, so then you gotta go.
It's just really, it's just handing out ballots, checking IDs. There's really a snap.
I just, I, I guess I was just saying, I don't think the building size.
No, they were just, they were just pointing out, it's a vote voting, but in Madison, there's a lot of voting spots that have a lot fewer, you just, they end up being outside, it's just the way it is. But anyways, it was just interesting that they looked at it from that perspective.
Yeah.
How long have we had the DS two hundred?
Twenty seventeen, no, what's it say, twenty thirteen? I have twenty thirteen, if you can.
Oh, yes, purchased in twenty thirteen, I'm sorry. Okay, so we've gotten more than a decade or two.
Twelve years, I'm saying, yeah. Twelve years.
Okay.
With dishwashers.
And so if our DS two hundred were to like, kaput, like the county only has like one or two extra for everyone in the county to share, like if you need an emergency, it's just having a backup.
Yeah, redundancy is critical for an election.
Almost fifty bucks.
Seven grand.
Hundred, so I'd sell six thousand, so I'd have to use fifteen hundred. Would be.
Can I make the motion to approve purchasing a DS three hundred ballot tabulator?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Second.
If you did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say, so moved. All right, we're seven, discussion and possible action regarding twenty twenty-five village staff summer hours recap.
It's me again. Um, so this is just regarding summer hours. Um, so this is just a proposal to go back to normal hours, uh, beginning September, um, September second, I believe, the day after um, Labor Day. Um, so that would, yep, be the second, um, and then have this be um, an annual thing for employees. So we would have summer hours implemented the Tuesday following Memorial Day and then run through Labor Day each year moving forward. Um, we didn't receive any complaints really. Um, we didn't receive any complaints really about um, us not being open, um. On a specifically on, on, on Friday afternoons, um, people. You know, liked the perk of being out earlier on Fridays, um, but also didn't really have the desire to start at seven AM. In the middle of winter, um, so I think, I think just, I think this might be a good. Happy medium, just having it as a perk to employees, just to have summer hours in the summer and then regular hours the rest of the year.
Bill.
Did any, so one of the things we talked about was to get employees have the option of opting out of there if they wanted to, did they opt out of it?
Um, so we, yeah, we absolutely did, so it didn't really work for Parks and Rec. Um, mostly because of, you know, all of the programming that happened in the summer, so that didn't really work for that department. I don't know if you wanna say anything more about that, Mike, at all, it just didn't work out for you guys, I know you took advantage of it sometimes. Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, like I modified my hours a little bit too, like seven o'clock was really early for me, cause I have a longer commute, so. I did like the seven thirty to four thirty kind of a thing, so it kind of was department by department what worked best for people. Um, but, I mean, ultimately, I think it was something that people were happy to have. And, yeah, I think that returning to regular hours would be just fine.
Just for the winter.
So it would, it would be.
The summer, summer hour.
Yeah, so we would just have it, Memorial Day to Labor Day would be summer hours and then any other time would be regular hours.
Go ahead, Cody.
The one thing that I, I don't really have issue with it, I do wanna make it known, whether I'm on this board or not, when our new building is built. I don't think that first summer, it should be restricted to summer hours, I think someone should be there. If we're gonna be spending seven and nine million dollars. Excuse me, taxpayer money, someone should be there, if someone needs to be in that building. I know it kind of, might that be the biggest. Fan or staff might not be the biggest fan of that statement, but I think when you spend that kind of money, someone needs to be there.
Well, we're talking about Friday afternoon.
Right, I, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I get where.
Um, I know, you said there weren't complaints, but I was watching, our staff was watching, there were a lot of people that were coming to the door, I'm gonna tell you, there were. And there were people that looked like they were ticked, or maybe they'd never called you guys to say they were ticked, but there were, we were watching throughout the day. People were coming and every Friday people were coming. So I'm just wondering, is there any way that we could still rotate, that was my question last night, can we rotate? Keep the staff open, but then, or keep the doors open, but then rotate the staff so you have every other Friday or every whatever, or whatever, however the rotation.
We can talk more about that for next year, absolutely, I ended up being here most Fridays.
Park and Rec was here most Friday.
Right.
The only time that I'd say people, people wish them out, but they were coming up, just like they do when we're open, and they drop off, and then end the drop offs. But I feel, I would say a number of hours that we, like, where you get open, people still do that, they walk out, or they don't come inside, they just put everything stop.
Yeah, cause I.
Real question.
I had to ask.
Uh, I'm trying to get what you're saying, you know, common money, however, forty hours, we're still working forty hours.
Right.
So we're in a building for forty hours, other than the Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday.
Right, that's not the part of it, but the part is for the people that don't live in town, that don't work in town. By the time they can get to Crest Plains, if I worked in downtown Madison and I had to be at work before. Before eight, eight to five, or whatever my hours were, it'd be really hard for me to get to, it'd be hard for me to get in.
You actually can get in though, cause they're open at seven, see, I actually got, I like the seven o'clock because I could stop in before eight o'clock. I'm right after with the workout class, and then I'm like.
I, I, I think it's manageable to do both, I, I, I'm thinking, what you do is. Instead of having a half day Friday, some people have, you'd have two, one person gets a full Friday off, the next week they work the full Friday. You know, you, so you're still getting, you're still getting this, you're getting the same coverage, but people instead of working a half day Friday, they get the whole day off. And then the other, you know, I think there's, I mean.
Collect data and how many people are actually coming in, cause I had to ask. Right before, cause I wanted to know how many people were, it was like, it was so minimal.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just trying to find a clout.
I agree, I just think that we should collect data to make these decisions, right?
I agree.
I don't know if compromising on, I mean, I'm, uh, uh, an unknown of people mad on Friday afternoon, I mean.
Well, you're not gonna collect that, but they did collect data, how, to the summer, how many came Friday from noon to four o'clock, so there's data there.
Yeah, we do have that.
You know, so we do have some data on how many people that work.
I'm just confused about the compromise, does that?
The compromise is, let's just, I'm gonna give you employee A and employee B.
No, no, I under, I understand the proposal.
Oh.
But if you're compromising, that means there's a problem you're trying to compromise on.
Yes.
What is that problem?
The problem is I have some staff that wants coverage on Friday, all eight hours, and then I have other staff that wanna just make it a half day on Friday. So I'm trying to come up with a compromise where the employee, instead of having two half days, he get, they get a full day off every other Friday.
But with the hours set, they have that flexibility, cause it's an opt-in program as it is.
No, but it's not, this wouldn't be an option, it's a, would be, the requirement would be someone's gotta be here keeping the building open. Until four o'clock on Friday.
And to be clear, this is not.
Problem, that you're trying to make compromise on, and I guess what I'm saying is, is that actually a problem on summer Friday afternoons?
Well, I have a problem with it, yeah, and.
With the new building.
With the new building, right, what happened this summer, I'm like, okay, cool.
So, from now, a problem.
Right. Well, could be.
We can put this on the agenda for like, yeah, I don't know, April or March, to discuss how.
Sure, I.
We should approach this next year, if people are in agreement that we go back to regular hours after Labor Day.
I think they're talking about the new building, so next year there will be a new building, it's gonna take at least a year, it's gonna be probably twenty twenty.
But even whatever we, you know, you, you all wanna see next year for summer hours, we can discuss that.
You're talking old or new.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll put it back on.
Okay, sounds good.
How about, can I make a motion that we go back to regular hours starting September second?
I like that one.
I actually thought we had done that at the very original motion, that's what I thought we had, but, go, go ahead, who wants to say? All right, we got a motion in a second, uh, go back to regular hours on September second.
I don't know, and since the new building is not gonna be up next summer, and we don't have to, then we can forget about this, we don't have to remember it to come up again in April. We just wanna amend this motion to tack on the summer hours.
We'll bring it back next year.
Okay, that's what you guys want to do.
All right, here, any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all the polls same, so moved. All right, so now we're going with uh, discussion of possible action regarding the twenty twenty six capital. Improvement projects, we'll take each one individually. All right, the first one is village hall police sta, police station building construction. Vile motion.
Well, we don't know how, do we?
Yeah.
Because it says USD borrowing.
Okay, just for the capital plan, like is this generally.
Okay, yeah, you're not, yeah, yeah.
Does anyone have like a, the diff between last year, I mean, I pulled up last year's and I pulled up this one, and there was quite a bit of differences.
Yes.
But it just didn't, like, I don't, it, it, it was hard for me to like go through and find them all, and so I think for us to have a productive conversation, it would be good to have. What changed between the old and the new?
So anything that was planned should have been on last year's, and if this is new, it was not on last year. For twenty twenty six.
Yeah, but like, the Cross Plains pool replacement construction says planned. Both of them means it moved, but then, I don't know, it was, I had to look at the old one, cause I was like, wait a second, that moved from.
Okay.
Twenty twenty eight to twenty twenty nine, but it's just, again, it, it would have been nice to have a.
Well, the thing is, I think you have to, you know, the department heads reevaluate every year.
Sure.
So they're gonna take what they're, they see as priorities and needs, and then put them in, in the order that they think, and. They may choose to swap something around, and that's totally with, in their possible, we should be looking at. The, the key right now is obviously the twenty six ones, right, cause those are the ones that need to be worked on. You know, once this thing passes in November, the ones in later years gives you that idea of what's coming down the road.
Sure.
That's the, the purpose, so at the end here, when we approve that, we're not approving that, all of that's gonna happen in that year. What we're doing is accepting it that these are what the department heads feel our capital need in the next five years.
Yes, I'm okay with that, unlike the broad strokes and like some of these little things, but like the pool in particular, right? I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm the only person that it seems like everyone is asking me when the pool is coming, but I'm sure Sarah gets it to at least, especially with Dylan on swim team. Like, I could point to this and be like, look, we're planning for twenty twenty eight, and.
Yeah. And I think that's a fair thing to say, but if it doesn't happen in twenty, in, in twenty twenty seven. We don't have the finances or the bid comes in differently, gets pushed to twenty nine, twenty nine or twenty nine, or twenty thirty, that's just how it works.
I guess.
I mean, we can't say for sure we're gonna build a pool.
Sure, I, I, I know, but if, so I guess what was in the participant moving from twenty eight to twenty nine in this one?
I don't, well, Mike will have a better idea.
So mainly what, what I did, it took what I thought was a timeline, the quickest, absolute quickest timeline we're about to do. Uh, and I did twenty twenty nine, and I tried to update those numbers, based on what we received back from part of it. So what you paid for in regards to the planning and structural plans, I took his actual numbers and tried to put that into the budget. The best way we could, knowing, like, you're gonna have a year of planning, then you're gonna have a year of engineering, and then you're gonna have a year of construction, like, that's kind of.
Okay.
And now it's up to you whether or not those numbers, comfortable with or you need to move.
Okay. All right, so let's uh, we're back to the village hall, and I have a. I, do you want, we'll just do it, and basically what you're saying is you wanna keep it on the twenty twenty six. Uh, uh, plan, it doesn't mean it's gonna happen, you're not. Oh, oh, did you, oh, we're already, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I said it like two or three times.
Yeah.
Okay, you, you made the motion and you said, okay. So, so, all right.
And right after you said that.
Oh, okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Village Hall Police Station, building construction.
All right, any discussion?
Just the, you know, we put in the specifics here, right, while, and this, these differ from even the options we talked about earlier, right?
No.
So the option, well.
But that's not gonna stay there.
We, we just don't, yeah.
We're just keeping it on this.
We're, we're, we're doing the same, it's keeping, this is what is a, a proposed source of the funding, but it can change a bit. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls. All right, twenty twenty six flood mitigation project. This, I, I think we've had this in our budget for a while, evidently.
I think it keeps pushing it off.
Yeah, yeah, we keep pushing it, but when we originally agreed to go for the loan and accept the loan.
Right.
Yes, the actual implementation has been delayed because of.
Permitting. Which is almost complete, the permitting is almost complete, so this is.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I remember.
We cut the grant there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second, all right, motion, second discussion.
Uh, let's just say, I think, we're, we're budgeting that twenty five thousand every year, I think, I feel like the past couple of years.
Yes, we have, yeah, that was the match, it was a seventy five, twenty five. All right, uh, any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls same, all right. We go to county KP restructure and multi-use trail public, oh, that's who did it. So, again, this has been on, uh. I think the grant is what, three, four years old, Mike? Yeah, so we're, huh, this the one we have to use or lose? Yes.
Yes.
And the big debate was remembered, can we just do the trail, and it just turns out that. Part of the trail covers the road, so do the whole road. Even though, so, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the county KP reconstruction of multi-use trail.
I'll second him.
Right, a motion and second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls same, so moved, all right, we have. Annual street resurfacing. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty six annual street resurfacing.
We have a second?
A second.
All right, discussion, I have something, I'll go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I forgot to check, but I thought it was just at our last meeting. We wanna air over this, when we.
Yeah, we, well, not this one, but for this year. For this year.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I, I, here's the thing, I'm gonna vote no for this, because it's generally been when we do a major road project, we count that as. A road uh, project, so when we did Brewery Road, we didn't do any other roads. When we did Church Street, we didn't do any other roads, because we're spending a million dollars on the road, um. So that's kind of what we, that's our investment, this million bucks, so I think we take. I am not gonna support this because it, we've already, we're basically spending it on another road. Go ahead, Sarah.
I understand it's a lower priority, so, yeah, like you do maintenance, that's somewhere, so.
Bill.
So do we have other roads that we're redoing?
Next one.
That are already on the books for twenty six?
Not for twenty six, but for twenty five, we went, we actually added supplements at the last meeting. So this year, we're doing more than what we usually do, we approved uh, extra roads. There were supplements, these are the roads we wanted, then we had two roads or supplement, we voted to do it, so this year, we're doing a little bit more roads than we generally do. Next year, we're spending four times as much on a road and a path, you know, so.
I wanna keep.
Yeah, so I, I think that, and I think if you looked at how, um. DOT gives us money back, it, it's kind of nice to try to balance it, because it's a percentage. Over five years, Bobby, and six years, on how much you spend on roads is what you get, the percentage. So we're doing a huge amount now, so, you know, next year, we put it in there and stays a little bit more consistent.
So, I understand, but are there any roads within the village that the roads like. Like brewery used to be, that are just in really bad shape that need to be resurfaced?
Yes.
So, right, so, so, I mean, I understand why we're, I understand your point, Jay, of, of not. Approving this because of doing KP, but we still have other roads within the village that need to be done.
Yeah, what were you planning on using this for in twenty six?
In five, six, sorry, years. And in twenty twenty six, it would, I had a plan for London Drive is. Bad curb to curb, um, this probably wouldn't cover all of London Drive, so it would be done probably in pieces, and then. Probably in two pieces, two sections, and then, but moving forward, it's, I, further down, I have Park Street as a three-year project. So, not doing anything directly within the village next year, essentially pushes anything back three years.
Well, well, it doesn't push it back three years, pushes it back one year.
Well, next, moving forward, the street projects, the two hundred and fifty thousand will probably go into the park street projects, the magnates, but. Just because of the big undertaking.
Yeah, I understand, but if it's a three-year project, and we're not starting it in twenty six, started in twenty seven, it's, it's only adding one year, you still got three years.
So like London Drive, we don't do it twenty six.
It's not gonna get done until touchstone twenty nine.
He's gonna skip London and then do.
Well, you got both, you got Park Street on here and London.
Park Street is just, just the planning of it. And then, and twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, Park Street will be done in three phases. Cause that is water, sewer, curb, road.
So, I, I know we're jumping, so you're saying it's gonna cost us a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars to plan Park Street?
Um, county and country estimated ten percent for planning, and each phase of Park Street is roughly. One point five million.
Okay, so if next year, we're just doing the planning of Park Street, it would only be.
A hundred and sixty two thousand.
Oh. Oh.
That's the engineer, that's the engineer.
Really?
Okay, so is. Is, well. What would it take to do all of London? Just out of curiosity, about.
Um. Town and country thought that, cause it was either this year, either London Drive or the products we're doing. Um, so it'd be pushing the boundaries of the two hundred fifty thousand, cause it's like. Traditionally, it's been two thousand one year feet and London Drive is right around two hundred four hundred million feet. So, so how much? I I didn't have to put an estimate on it.
Okay. It'd be about three hundred and fifty if you do sign it.
So.
Yeah.
Well, that was gonna be my fucking view. Should this be up to take care of London, all London? They, I, I mean, we we've been at two fifty ever since I can remember.
Correct, but I'm all on Jay's side, I'm also trying to be semi fair that we are spending a million dollars on KP.
I understand.
And we're paying seven million for a a village hall.
Two are not mutually, they're the the two are mutually exclusive, they're not the same thing.
Well, I would disagree that the taxpayers' things are coming out of the same pair of pants, maybe different pockets, but.
True, well.
I I see what you're saying, it is the same pair of pants, but this is roads versus buildings. A lot of people might be like, we need our roads, not a building.
But we are doing roads, we're spending a million bucks.
Yeah, well.
It really more, we're spending.
Right, but that's for.
We're spending almost three million dollars on a road project.
Well, part of it is multi-trailments.
Well, but we did brewery was a multi-trail use.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so it's all part of that.
I. I think what they're saying, instead another way, I don't think we would do KP right now had we not had. That date by match.
I would agree.
Yeah.
We would not, I I agree, but but we are.
I think so, I I guess. Uh, you guys yell at me if I'm putting words in your mouth, but like. There's this project, which is probably new, not maintenance because of this match and all the rest, but now, now we're just foregoing the maintenance of. You can't wreck other streets, I mean, I don't.
You gotta, you you can't just, it's just like at your home, if you're gonna. Go buy a new car, you're not gonna necessarily redo your kitchen the same year, right? I mean, there's, I understand they're not related, but I think we're making a huge investment in our roads and our trails. And that's, that to me is enough. I don't think we should be doing more, but. Judy, did you wanna say anything?
Um, if we didn't do London, how much would you still need some money in the budget just for repair, like? Like Bailey Street and like those kind of things, what would you need in the budget if we didn't do a whole road, just like?
Just for like the maintenance. The maintenance patchwork, it's. That's hard to predict, cause I don't know how many main breaks are gonna be. And what asphalt price is gonna be next summer, so.
But the thing is, we're gonna have them in doing KP, and generally, we try to, when we bid that out. You do a supplement bid to cover patchwork, that's what we did with this last bid.
I was kinda.
And I'm all for it.
I I was kinda hoping the same people that have a bid on KP would also bid on London. And maybe get our price a little bit lower, but. You can't guarantee that either, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cody.
My question was gonna be, so next year's planning, is there the planning for Park Street? Is next year, it's not breaking ground, doing everything?
That is just design work.
Okay, so are we like doing this service by not at least trying to get one bad road done? During the planning phase of a terrible road that needs a lot of work, that's breaking water, it ends every month, feels like?
Yes.
So, like, I mean.
That's why I I.
No, and and I'm not disagreed with you, I think it's important to continue infrastructure. I'm the biggest fan. Around for investing in infrastructure. But again, I'm just looking at, again, we just can't do everything at once, and I would. Say we're investing a ton of money right now on infrastructure roads. And, you know, to me, we can go a year and then if uh, next year, we gotta do London and it's three hundred and fifty versus two fifty, we bump it up to three fifty. You know, but. I, like I say, it's it's, we've got to somehow bring. Uh, this down a little bit, cause you're looking at, you know, if we do everything, if we say yes to everything on here, it's twelve million bucks.
Were you saying it was only going to be part of London? And eventually we'd have to do more of London, right?
Yes, correct, it's it. Whatever the number is, we'll see how much, cause how much of London we can do with that amount of money? And just kind of go from there.
So, if we did it later, we'd do more of it at one time, does that, that any benefit to you?
Uh, it's gonna be higher bills, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But isn't it better to do the pole road versus break it and then start and match it up? I would think there would be a seat there or something.
There there would be a joint, and there's, for as long as London is, it's gonna be a joint, no matter what is it. And the infrastructure under London is good right now, um. So to maintain that road would be. Besides the curb, the curb and the shot on.
Alright, let's do a roll call vote on this. Cause I think it's gonna be.
Was there a motion?
Oh, I thought, I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, somebody made it.
I believe we were in.
Yeah. Hey, I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Was the record.
Bill made a motion to approve.
Alright, roll call vote.
Rusty Pomakowski.
I'm gonna say yes.
Rusty Bor Carter, no. Rusty Bor Glenn.
No.
Rusty Brochus.
Yes.
Rusty Braden.
Yes.
Rusty Calvator, no.
No.
I'm often gonna airline votes that, wow. Jay, you got to use your presidential power.
Alright, so now we're at uh, Park Street reconstruction. So, um. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, let's have discussion then.
This one makes less sense.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure we're totally clear on this. So this is the engineering for the road. Is it water and sewer?
It's, it's a full complete research, water, sewer, front storm, and then, yeah, curb gutter.
Okay, so how much of the hundred and sixty two comes out of water and sewer?
That I have not. Broke down, I guess.
I think the email from town and country did have it broke down.
It it is storm water part of sewer? Or water, no, that's, that's on field.
Yes, I.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I I, I mean, that that one, I'm gonna agree with that we need to do, cause that's been on the list for ever and ever, and that's why I was. You know, Park Street has been.
Many water main breaks that we had on Park this year.
Well, we fixed it last year, the main one that had three breaks in like. Couple months.
I thought there was more this year, I feel like every other day on Facebook, there's a something on Park Street.
Um, the ones that were listed, I counted twenty two breaks uh. Throughout the years, uh. It's being held together with Band-Aids and that thing.
But I heard the other day on the radio that you had a water, was there a water main break at Market and Park? And was that on the new park that we just did?
No, it was uh, it was on Spring Street and Park.
Oh, okay. Let's think, we just, we just did that.
Yeah.
Alright, um, any discussion on that? No, I didn't have a motion. It is getting, alright, any other discussion on this?
So I just have one. So if we are approving this, then we're going into a three-year cycle on Park and no other road is being repaired in the village?
No.
That, what we're.
That's not how I'm looking at it.
There's no major road repair, like a a major undertaking, my understanding of repair.
For what?
For next year.
I I would, to answer your question, Michael, if if this was all gonna be done in one year, then I would agree. That we're not gonna do. Maintenance. If this was all apart, but he's taking it, breaking it into three sections, so then it makes it more. Cost effective to also improve other roads, but I I would go along with it. If we're doing Park, that should count just like everything else. But that's not what we're saying here, we're just doing the engineering right now.
Yeah.
We're not committing to any.
I under, I understand, I'm just doing long-term projections in my head, cause if this is the engineering, then you have. A one and a half, one and a half, one and a half million spend on Park.
Yeah.
There's actually gonna be a two fifty other street repaired, two other street on a one and a half, one and a half.
Not, not if, not if you say no again like that.
That's what I'm saying, after pushing London out and, well, we had that vote, but London is rocky.
Yep.
But the other thing is, I don't think the next year, I don't think next year, we're gonna have. Six million for a new building. We're not gonna, you know, I think, I think you gotta look at the year and not just make a general statement like that. Next year, if people come in, that's gonna, could be the priority.
Well, even next year, there isn't the one million dollar street project, right?
Right.
Now they have. Three hundred for the first phase of Park.
Right.
And then, almost eight hundred comes from DNR loans. I'm assuming that's the safe harbor of water, the clean water thing.
Yeah, so out of. The PF budget, it'd be a lot lower.
For Park, like the sewer and waters, so water, full one and a half on general application.
Yeah.
Alright, it sounds like everybody's kind of favorable, just uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls same, alright. Alright, replace the nineteen seventy street sweeper. Go ahead, is this a new one or is this a rebuilt one or?
Uh, so was it last month that in the packet that it had the? Flyers or the magic put in there? So McQueen gave us quotes or gave us. Four or five pamphlets and they ra- ranged from a hundred and twenty five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand for a used street sweeper. So it'd be used, it'd be refurbished. Um, they get it out of their, the guy that does this area, he gets it out of his sales area, so he knows. What was wrong, did Black Earth did this a year and a half ago, you know? Um, I think they were at like one forty two, one forty three, hundred forty two thousand, um, and they're very happy with it and I. Uh, talked to the guy and they they put a lot of money into it to recondition new. Um, to go brand new with these, you're looking at three hundred thousand, three to four hundred thousand.
Do you get any kind of warranties when you buy a new purpose?
Uh, that, I don't remember that. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I think it's very limited.
Yeah.
But I, cause we were, when Jerry was here, we were actually looking at one time. To go in together with the sweeper with Black Earth. Yeah, we were gonna do a new one, but they had a change in their administrator and president and it just kind of fell and they just needed it. So they went out and bought a, a used one.
Yep.
A refurbished one.
Can we rent it?
Yeah, they don't wanna share.
Well, I, you know, the.
I was joking.
No, no, but the thing is.
Jay answered the question, yes.
Yes.
Um, I believe Black Earth quoted us at a hundred and seventy five dollars an hour, so it'd be like twenty two thousand dollars for the year. So that.
Could we get anything back for ours? From somewhere?
Scrap now.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
If someone takes it, you're ahead. I'd like to get this more on a ten-year cycle.
Just then.
Yes.
But it would be nice, since they just want, we should try to cooper, you know, work with Black Earth, cause we could have borrowed a brand new one for this.
Yeah, I think.
Worked it.
Yeah.
Moving forward, at least then we maybe be on the same timeline as.
Yeah.
So.
I I missed, it's a refurbished one, but how old is it about? I I just said that.
There, so bigger municipalities do the ten-year switch, so they're anywhere from twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen.
Oh, so we're getting one that's coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you also have figured out, so like ten-year maybe.
Yeah.
Right, do I have a motion or did we already do one? I don't even. Okay.
Prove the purchase of the street sweeper.
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion?
So the one we have is still working, but.
No, it's not.
Yeah, that one, I remember the hydraulic.
To whether we wanna put a bunch of money in to try to get our old one operating, or if we can kind of start. The other process.
So did we sweep the streets with it this year?
Um.
Kind of skip.
We have not yet in August. They did a little bit in July.
Cause I saw them all.
Yeah. It also is for our MS fours for me. We need to keep up and maintain.
Bobby, did you wanna say something?
I'd say we have not done our borrowing yet for this year, this is a need we need now, like.
Oh. Huh.
Why haven't we borrowed for this year yet?
Yes, we have, uh, so I actually talked to elders last week, what I wanted to do was. To authorize to go out to bid in September and award bid in October. But now we're thinking, we might wait, because of the whole USDA thing and. What we think we're gonna have to borrow for just regular borrowing this year is about a half million dollars, so. It would just be like a local bank borrowing, not going out to like a municipal bond. So elders is thinking, we might be better off. Depending on how we borrow for village halls, to add that half million onto that.
Oh.
So.
Every sense.
We're just, it's kind of wait and see.
Yeah.
Wait, add the half million where?
So.
To the twenty six.
If if we just deal borrowing.
Oh, cause we're already six months through the year.
We don't have to do interim financing, so we could borrow seven million dollars. This year and then invest part of it and like make money up to the proceeds. Or we could do interim financing, see where you're just, you know, doing draws and then refinance at the end. So there's the options of how we've got to.
We definitely gotta bring the experts in before we.
Yeah, so there's a lot of moving parts, so we're just kind of waiting as long as we can.
But I I I guess what I would suggest is let's just get this approved, but I think if there's a thing where we borrow. This year to get some of the stuff for next year, we should do it. If it's gonna help us financially.
The next one's pretty big.
Well, let's uh, let's just get with the sweep. Can I have a a motion? But did you?
We already have a.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask, I wanted to. For a one-year thing, would you be comfortable renting from Black Earth to try it out to see if it would work?
Um, they actually came in and did Park Street um, before the parade, and it did a lot better job than what we have. Um, I I think moving forward at, you know, twenty two, twenty three thousand dollars a year, and a ten years, I think we'd be ahead if we. If we bought it, yeah, just the refurbished one.
I just wanted to ask.
No, no, it's a good question, it's definitely a good question. Just something with that.
Just for a year, just to get this back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it's their, it's their guy, their machine. With that a hundred and seventy five bucks.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go buy a street sweeper.
There you go. There you go.
We put signs on it.
Yeah.
Flatsome.
Alright.
Hundred seventy four hours, but a deal for the building.
Alright, so uh. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the polls same, so move. Alright. Now we're into this uh, upgrades to the two thousand five freight liner dump while salt truck.
Yeah.
I thought we already did this, but go ahead.
Well, Jerry, Jerry had in the budget for a full replacement, after getting quotes and numbers and looking over our truck. Um, talking with our staff. They said the chassis of the truck's a little bit shaky, it's really just the bed of the truck. That's shot from all the main brakes from blacktop and gravel and dirt going through it that it could use. Want a new plow, cause that keeps falling off in the winter. And then, a a new box, and so the quote came back on that. Um, everything all in is fifty eight thousand versus the hundred and thirty five thousand that was originally. And I got a quote. For a Madison truck to redo that. Um, and then I got a quote for them, if I took in a brand new chassis. Brand new truck, um, to redo all the wiring, all harnesses, all the lights and everything, um, it was ninety thousand.
Wow.
So, and that doesn't include the cost of the chassis of the truck. Engine's in good shape, it it runs good, it, the hoist works well, it's just stuff falls out of the back anymore, since it's all dented and banged up.
Okay.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the.
I'll second it. Updates, I know, just thinking about it though.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all polls same, so move. All right. Thank you, man. Right, we're at H Bear Park Large Diamond Update Planning and Engineering. This is Michael.
This is approved. I've been waiting on for you to start up a new bear park improvement committee. No, it's been approved, uh, in the previous study, this is the uh, the uh, bear park improvement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not far.
I think it's a twenty-five.
It just keeps getting pushed out.
Yeah, okay, so.
Um, but it is approved, the the plan, we have met with the stakeholders, the different stakeholders, it's now just getting them together to come up with this. This plan, like uh, planning meetings within the entire community as well.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Bear Park Large Diamond Updates Planning Engineer Parks Recreation.
Who did you say, you have someone that wants to what?
I need a second.
Second.
All right, that's right, discussion.
If you could pay for wifi, it doesn't.
Yeah, he said he he had Portuguese, no. Yes, he said I'll pay for wifi at that time.
All right, any discussion, go ahead, Michael.
So I don't know if I asked this before, this is like updating the dugouts or where the. Every everything around the Normesser Pavilion, so this would be ADA aspects, so getting to the diamond. Back to the shelter, this would include the backstop, this would include warning track, this would include infield. Uh, grass infield and then lights as well, meaning like the planning for it, not the actual construction. Like what are those prices, what could it look like, where should things be? Dugouts is the big one, as you know, the small diamond dugouts got it done and then there's bats on them.
Can't see through them.
Great for coaching.
That's what I was sort of asking about, like, I don't wanna do that.
This is just the engineering.
This is just for the planning engineer.
Within the expect, if we build it in twenty twenty-seven, the sixty-five in borrowing.
Well, we'll get some updated numbers for that, but that's what this will do, this will provide some all things numbers.
So those numbers, do you think will go up?
I do, I hope not, but I do.
And then I guess the playground improvement fees, that's. I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at twenty twenty-seven, I'll get down to the next one, says playground improvement fees as one of the.
Yeah, that's the area, uh.
Melody. I know.
Not yet, not yet, we we gotta stay on this here, so. We're at bear pole.
It's more of like.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're at H right now.
I guess it's being twenty twenty-six, like why? Not. Okay, keep going.
Yeah, we we gotta stay for on the next, in uh, nine, you can, that's where you would bring it up, cause that's the twenty-sixth, the thirty-one. Right now, we we're doing this A through K.
Okay.
All right, so we we can stay on, so I, did you do, did someone do a motion?
Yeah, I'll do motion in a second.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, so any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all polls same, okay, now we're going to I, Scenic Valley Park and.
Interruption, so this would be, uh, we we have, we are doing the planning right now, uh, through a conceptual plan and coming up with cost estimates. For Scenic Valley Park, uh, we have architecture under, uh, they're working with us on the development in that area. So also conceptual plans and some ideas on costs going forward, but the reason, so we have in there for the hundred and twenty-nine nine. For next year for construction purposes, that is only if all the houses there are built out, to understand, we just have that as a place.
All right, do I have a motion? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So move, all right, we have a motion in a second, any discussion?
One twenty-nine nine, that's just the parking back piece for all of those. And we don't have that, it's all lots and stuff, right?
I think we have around eighty-eight thousand.
Okay. But we, how long until, it's like six or seven years.
Yeah, seven years.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all polls same, so moved, all right. Uh, we're at removal of the pergola and restain exterior wood trim of the library.
So the pergola in the front of the library, I'm sure some of you have noticed, Michael has, uh, is rotting away, we have like birds that have built nests and. They're on posts, um, getting to be a hazard. Um, it also doesn't really provide shade, so instead of fixing it up, we're just gonna remove that. Um, what our proposal is, and then the exterior trim on the building really needs to be restained, um, to keep it maintained so that it's not. And cause worse building issues. Wow. They can find somewhere else to ask preferably. Not right by the front door, we got.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to uh, remove the pergola and restain the exterior trim of the library.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Is this grouped up, cause it would be the same people who probably came.
What was your question?
Is it grouped up into one thing?
Oh.
Because it would just be the same people would, contractors would come in and remove the pergola and stain.
I don't know if it'd be the same people, I think your staining would probably be a separate, I don't know.
Okay.
We had one company had it, or two, they can do both.
Oh.
Another one, like would do their.
Yeah, I just usually they're so specialized, one is demolition and one is painting. All right.
It doesn't take a lot of specialization to tear down a pergola, so.
I just said, do we have a fire department burn it?
Well, you need special equipment, I would think, all right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all polls same, so move. All right, replace the nineteen ninety-eight tender two fire district. And we did get uh, email that this is there, oh, you're gonna, why don't you share it then?
It looks like Justin's also online. I don't know if he wants to. I don't know. Justin, yeah, just read his email. Oh, hey, Justin. Yes, we can hear you.
You hear me?
Yeah.
All right, perfect, uh, I I guess I'll just kind of sub uh, uh, supplement the email if you wanna read that after I get done talking, but. Um, originally we had uh, something like five fifty-five in the budget. Uh, for ten or two um, replacement, we're down to four twenty-one, uh, I don't have the numbers in front of me, sorry. Um, but then we uh. Um, manufacturer that we're gonna propose tomorrow at the fire meeting, it's a three step payment, um, ten grand, ten thousand upfront. Uh, at contract signing, um, which the volunteer firefighters have, I'm committed to uh, covering. And and uh, a hundred and thirty thousand uh, in twenty twenty-six, and then the remainder uh, two. Two seventy-something in twenty twenty-seven, um, just as a reminder that those numbers are um, the total cost, not the villages of fifty. Fifty some percent, um, so that's all, that's how the payment would be, tender to itself is that aging truck, uh, it's a nineteen ninety-eight. Um, with the chassis, with this manufacturer, we would have a truck mid two thousand twenty-seven. Um, and NFPA actually requires uh, replacement at twenty-five years, so actually over the twenty-five year mark, um, it's three third. Uh, we've been changing our trucks up to thirty, just because of use and mileage and stuff like that, so we've been able to get in. Little more years out of them, um, if the NFPA or sorry, not NFPA, ISO came to um. Came to us and did an audit, they would see that truck is not compliant, that could potentially um, uh, impact insurance rates, so. Um, so has the. Numbers, uh, but I'm pretty sure that's exactly what it was.
So what is it for uh, twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-six for you was seventy-four thousand?
Yeah. So that two hundred ninety-five is seventy-four dollars.
Then we just gotta make sure that we get the larger part. Upon delivery, which will probably be next year, right, Justin?
Uh, no, it'll be twenty twenty-seven, so the larger, so they, when the chassis gets delivered, when the freightliner chassis gets delivered to the manufacturer. Pay that invoice cost. And then twenty twenty-seven is the remainder that I put the lights inside and the paint, the graphics, the tank, the pump.
Probably about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Bill?
So, I know we we farm out to uh. A company out in Ash, Ash, I believe, or in Fox Valley, that 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 does the replacement, that does the fire agent builds, right?
Well, there's a couple in Wisconsin, I don't know who.
This one it says Pierce.
Pierce.
Here, okay.
No, uh, so we.
Like, so Justin, my question, have we, have we, so our idea, you know, to get pricing other than. One location, one better.
Yeah, so the email says that he, this new price is from a different man.
Oh, it is, okay, all right, cool, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the replacement nineteen ninety-eight tender two. And I'll second it.
Any more discussion, don't we have to adjust the amount to seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, I'll change it.
Yeah, she'll change.
We're just saying the item we're. Yeah, a lot of these numbers could change.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All polls same, all right, so now, we will go to number nine. Which is discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty capital improvement plan. Now, this is where you should ask the questions on everything and understand, when we're approving this, we're just approving that. They exist, you're not approving things in for twenty thirty, cause we can't do that, that belongs to another board. To approve, so I know Cameron, you had one on the pool, did you get it answered?
Yeah, I think Mike answered it, um, yeah, I mean, I think Mike, Mike answered it.
Okay, and Sarah, you had one?
I just was wondering about Melody.
So I should add that, I should add Melody back to. The current, yeah, which I, I, you know. So. Like, see that between.
Bumped it off.
It will turn anywhere right now.
Right, that's.
Cause you made the supplemental budget request, was that last year for Melody or was it a year before that?
That is even more.
Okay, but there was one for Melody and I think we all voted it down, cause we thought Melody was good enough. But that could have been, that could have been maybe two years ago now, I'm not, I'm mixing it up.
They all, they got approved because we borrowed the money for it, and then did it, did that what we used the money we borrowed.
No, I I I I I I know, I just, I I thought I remember.
Well, they started doing divisioning and everything, it's about her, like, when is this happening?
Did the visioning session, we will be getting chips in that playground here. Let's meet me a lot in the area, like, it's just a lot of.
Right.
Um. So, Michael, I know I did an assessment for the, some of the equipment, uh, I should say. The hair girl's house is in great shape, you mean it's solid, it doesn't move, it spins.
Yeah.
It's in awesome condition, like, there's a.
You ever see kids there?
Michael, I've never seen.
I know, I'm like, I never see kids there.
Cause that's why it's in great shape.
Probably has its own.
And the last time we talked about.
That neighborhood's gotten old.
Yeah. But they recycle eventually.
It's all small.
Right, right, it's for younger kids, yeah. But but a lot of my kids' friends lived in that neighborhood and they're all now adults and. Their parents are my age and stuff, so once they start, yeah, once they start selling.
That's what's happened, it's cycling.
Oh, is it?
There's a house across the street, there's two young kids, there's a young girl lives across from us, there's two living next to us, so they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's starting, you're starting to get, you're starting to get cycling and I know a guy who lived in PI who moved in there, he has two sons now.
Yeah.
You're giving some cycling to that neighborhood.
So what is the amount that you know?
Well, the amount that would be needed for that, that would be on the board, but I would highly recommend that fifty thousand number, I mean. Honestly, like, we got seventy-eight thousand was what we spent on Westview. And if you've seen Westview, it looks great, but it's not a lot of equipment, it's just playground equipment is.
And I would recommend that we make that a smaller area, cause I agree.
I would absolutely.
Yeah, it's such a huge area.
We we can think about something, uh, something different, but that would be, yeah.
Yeah, we had division session, I have all their notes still.
Okay.
Uh, people didn't want, they would walk toward that, no noise, um, that's hard, have you been in that realm, there's a lot of backyards, obviously that.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, they're an option.
Michael wants to marry in the room.
Well, maybe it would be something lower.
All right, any, any, any other questions on that at all?
A lot of different, different items.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the library bathroom remodel for a hundred and fifty grand seems a lot, and I will go. Well, what's, what's your justification for remodeling those two bathrooms?
So right now, we do not have any family restrooms for patrons to use. Or general bachelor bathrooms for patrons to use, um, bathrooms we have, they're functional, they're also not great. Uh, um, so this is. They will need to be redone at some point in the near future, and if we're doing that, we will, because it's well paying for. Everybody. Um, so converting that to. A few, I mean, it would would be more than one, family bathroom or multiple.
To me, those bathrooms are are big, at least the meds, and and there's a changing station in there for kids, I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To renovate those bathrooms is is a lot of money and I don't, me personally, I don't see the need for that, but. We will say we can talk about it next year in twenty-six, but that's just my, my, uh, point today.
All right.
That's the, is this one, cause I always get confused the library, so the library board, but we are responsible for the the building, right?
Uh, it's, it's difficult.
Okay.
There, there's a lot, they have, let's put it this way, they have a number of funding sources, and each funding source have different rules. And what you can do, so it's, it's one of those things that you gotta sit down and and really kind of figure out. Cause we went around and around when we were gonna build it, you know, it's, it's very difficult to understand.
But they do have their own fund balance.
Yes, they do, yeah, yeah.
Which we use to cover projects that would run out of.
Yeah. All right, any other items on this, can I have a motion to uh, accept the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty capital improvement plan?
Are we making?
I will make an update, as we can, I'll update.
Sure, you can.
Yes.
This is just us accepting this, you can add to it whenever you want, we're not gonna hold you to this thing.
Okay, well, we talked about Melody Park, we talked about the, the, um.
Right, all you're doing is accepting this now, department heads can change this at any time.
Okay.
The thing that we're actually approving were the items for twenty twenty-six. So can I have a motion to? Accept the plan? I I'll make the motion, I'm gonna make a motion to uh, accept the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty capital improvement plan.
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all polls the same, all right, oh, did you say no? Okay. Uh, so we've been handed the twenty twenty-six weighted benefits budget. Make sure you take a good look at that, that's what we'll be discussing in September. And then we have, uh, last item, just got discussion and possible action regarding uh, special village board meeting. On October sixth, twenty twenty-five. On October sixth, twenty twenty five, at six P M. So is everybody okay with that? Well, you're gonna be at plant, so you're gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
Don't worry, you're gonna be here, you just gotta come a half hour early.
Yeah.
It, it.
Is it gonna go for five hours?
No, it's going half hour at most, cuz we have plant commission at six thirty. And this is really gonna be just filling you in on what the bids.
Yeah, and they'll have a recommendation.
Yeah.
So it's whether you accept it or not.
If it's twenty million bucks, we'll cancel.
Good for the moon, Jay.
Well, I'm just letting you an example, so we're not picking a number.
Over six.
October, it's the first Monday of the month. That should work. Right, yeah, do I have a motion to have a special meeting on October sixth to talk about the bids for the village hall?
I'll make a motion to have a special meeting on October sixth, so six P M.
A sec, oh, a second. All right, very good, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, so moved, future agenda items? All right.
Well, no, I got.
Okay.
Um, I would like to talk about, I've had, uh, at least one resident ask about. No parking, yellows, yellow strips in front of mailboxes, just for the board to talk about.
All right, I'll put it on there.
Yeah.
Well, you can.
We should go to public safety with that.
You, you can, just, you got a very large list of stuff to get through in the next couple of months, so it probably will be, I. I don't know, very late this year, top of the.
Yeah, we're not gonna get it done this fall anymore.
We gotta, with EMS, we gotta go over to the next period, for the next couple of months.
I'll, I'll work.
Plus, Chief Tony, you don't disagree with what I just said?
Oh, we.
It was, I think it's.
Yeah, yeah, so this is like. Just consider referred right now then, cuz it should start at the committee.
Well, I'll find.
That's fine, I just, I just wanted to be clear, we got it.
No, no, appreciate that.
Well, I have a list right now.
We didn't adjourn yet.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Is it worth doing the legwork on getting some solid votes on this street sweeper to?
This year, for this year?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. All right. Okay, yeah, I don't know who made the motion, but second, all in favor, uh, adjourn then say aye.
Aye.